The regular meeting of the Michawaka Common Council for Monday, April 12th, 2021, will please come to order. This evening, we will once again be altering our operating, I'm sorry, under some special rules of procedure in light of the ongoing public health emergency. To that end, we are affording some opportunity for members of the public to participate remotely. And those members of the public will be asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments that they wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record, and then after completing their comments, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute. And we thank all of you for your patience and cooperation, both those who are here live and in person and those who are participating remotely. And we'll, and with that, we will move into the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence, a remembrance of the more than 562,000,000 Americans who have lost their lives due to COVID-19, as well as for former Michawaka Councilman Don Crawford, who recently passed away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of March 15th, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorials.
Yes, Mr. President. Appeal number 2021-04 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council and the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is an appeal for use variance to allow a tattoo studio at 110 to 112 North Main Street. This appeal is signed by Charles J. Triple. Petition number 2021-03 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council and the City Plan Commission. This is a petition to rezone from C-1 to R-1, 1803 Lincoln Way West, and this is signed by Morgan Meck.
Thank you. This evening, we have no report of any special committee nor any ordinances on first reading, so we will move into resolutions.
Resolution R. 2021-07, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Michawaka, Indiana, approving a report of compliance with statement of benefits for certain property owners. Do you want me to read those properties?
Oh, by title only, yes.
B.D., S.J., R.M.C., Michawaka Development, Long Term Care Investments, Barak River Rock, Well-Pet, Riverwalk Development Group, Lippert Components, Jamil Packaging.
Thank you. This is the public hearing on proposed Resolution 2021-07. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Ken Prince, City Planner. As you know, every year, by law, each entity that has received a tax abatement must complete a required CF-1 form from the state that is ultimately submitted to the auditor. It's the role of the city council as local government to determine whether or not the abatement has met or is substantially in compliance with the abatement that they received. We have, every year, we send out letters to each entity that has received an abatement. We also go through if we feel like there are discrepancies in it, we ask for an explanation of what the discrepancy is and why it occurred. So all this information has been compiled by Derek Spear in my office and has been submitted to you along with the resolution. It is our opinion that these seven active tax abatements in the city are, in fact, in compliance, and I'll go briefly through them one by one, just really for those that are watching online. I know all the council have read the packets, but also note, this is, as President Hicksonbaugh noted, that these are due by May 15th of this year, so you do have time, if there is a question about any particular abatement, we do have time to ask for a continuance and to address it at the next two meetings if we had to. The first tax abatement is the oldest. It's for the Central Regional Medical Center Office Building. It was acquired after construction by B.D., Michawaka Development, LLC. Ultimately, in summary, the, they estimated that the, they would create 370 jobs with an estimated payroll of $10,555,000. Their current employment is 403 positions, which is 33 above that, and a payroll that is over three times what they had estimated at $34,390,000-plus. I would also note that this is the last year of compliance. For those online, it was a 10-year abatement. The hospital started construction in 2008, but did not complete until 2011, which is why we're reviewing that at this time. It's based on when they can, not when the abatement was approved, but when the improvements are completed. So that's the reason why this abatement seems to have lingered over that period of time. The next abatement, Long Term Care Investments. This is at 5805 North Fur Road. They estimated a total number of 61 full-time equivalent positions. They currently have 72. A payroll of $2,161,000 was estimated. They're at 3.18 million at this point in time. So again, well beyond what was approved when the abatement came in, and this is another abatement that is completed and you will not be seeing again next year for reporting. The next abatement is for River Rock LLC. This is for the River Rock Apartment Mixed Use Building, located just east of, or just west of Main Street on Michawaka Avenue. They estimated that they would generate five to eight jobs, and they currently employ six people. This also excludes the businesses that are located there, so there is actual employment that goes beyond that. They estimated the payroll at $200,000, and they're at 230, a little over 230,000, so again, well within compliance.
Ken?
Yes?
Before we go to the next one, is that also the one where they haven't shown up for a year?
No, no. So that is, they have not come in and they've not followed through on that portion of the expansion, so anything completed beyond, I believe they were given five years from the date of approval, that addition was started after that five-year period, so they would have had to come forward with an amendment in one way, shape, or form. They did not come forward. I would deem at this point, it's probably beyond coming back and amending it that way after the fact, but I'll let an attorney figure that out if it does come in, so.
Thank you.
The next is Well-Pet for their high-speed packaging line in 2015. They identified that the existing employment was 115 at that time with four jobs to be added. The total employment reported was 127. Again, the total payroll listed was six point, a little over 6.3 million, which was higher than the 3.89 million that they had estimated at that time, again, in complete compliance. Riverwalk Development Group LLC, this was for the apartments in 2017 that were proposed on the old Rink site. This is south of Michawaka Avenue, kind of at the end of Sarah Street there, where there's a small wooded area. We, it was approved. The developer then decided to change to a condominium-style project, and then COVID hit. At this point in time, they have not started that project. They have indicated that they do want to start that project later this year, and I would note that if they do not start it by May of 2022, their abatement will have expired, and they would have to bring it back before this council in order to receive an abatement for that project. So at this point, because they haven't started, there is no, nothing to consider in compliance or not in compliance, so again, we feel like they are working on their due diligence and that the abatement should move forward and be evaluated when construction actually begins. The next abatement is for Lippert Components. They originally estimated that that project was a $7.4 million investment. It ended up being a $13.3 million investment. When the abatement was filed, they listed the employment at 247 with an additional 200 jobs to be added. As you know, this council and the administration has met with Lippert for the past, over the past, prior to COVID regarding the employment, and I'm pleased to report at present, there are 395 employees, which is a substantial increase. This is an increase from 2017 and from the 266 employees reported last year. Essentially, 129 additional positions have been added since our last abatement compliance report. And this, again, they did end up moving the call center from Sample Street over to this facility, which was originally envisioned, which is why we believe it is now essentially in compliance. Total payroll was also listed at $19.78 million, which is significantly more than the $10.35 million that they originally estimated for the building.
Mr. Prince?
Yes?
One question. That doesn't include anything with their corporate headquarters, does it?
That does not include anything with their corporate headquarters.
Work at Street only?
Correct. Any other questions? Sorry.
I want you to do this.
I'm sorry?
Continue.
Thank you. The last abatement that is active is for J. Mail Packaging. J. Mail Packaging is the one that had a drop in numbers. I would say the total employment reported was 108, which is a decrease of 31 positions, which is also 43 less than what is projected. Per their correspondence, though, they're extending, we're very happy that our other abatements did not seem to be impacted by COVID. In this case, J. Mail was significantly impacted by COVID. They're in the corrugated container business, if you can imagine, if they have a significant client that no longer needs because they've shut down. They can't help that, they can't control that, and they, in fact, since that time, they've picked up and they have hired additional people. I would also note that the payroll was listed at $5.385 million, which is 10%, 10% higher than what was identified on the SB 1 when they filed it, so even though with this drop in employment numbers, the payroll is actually higher than what they thought it was going to be when they submitted it. So with that, that concludes the overview of the tax abatement compliance, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince? Mr. Compton?
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Appreciate it. River Rock is the, just so we're, I want to make sure, we're talking about the apartments on Michawaka Avenue there, right?
So there's two abatements for, Scott Savan is the managing partner of the Riverwalk project.
Okay, but the River Rock is what?
River Rock is the-
Is the completed apartment-
On Michawaka Avenue.
And the Riverwalk is the proposed-
Correct.
-condos that you're talking-
Just to make sure we're on the same page, yes.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure. So in my mind, that, that abatement wasn't given for employment. It was given in, as an incentive, and then that would be passed on to renters, we hoped, and, you know, and get people to live there.
That's correct.
What is his, do you know what his capacity is in the apartments? Are they full? Are they completely rented? Are they 80%? Are they 90%?
Typically, full occupancy is in that 95% range.
Okay.
And the fact that they built the nine additional units-
Yep.
-recently tells me that they were full or close to full in order to take on that addition-
Okay.
-to the project, but we have not checked in or verified the percent occupancy of that. And I would also argue that, yes, the abatement is to incentivize people living there, but with market competition, they've fulfilled that requirement by actually completing the building as-
Understood.
So if some market condition would change and the occupancy would drop, their abatement shouldn't be contingent.
I don't mean to say to-
No, 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 I just wanted to clarify that, that's fine.
I don't mean to sound like it's contingent on that, but for me, as a councilperson, that's how I justify supporting this, is we are going to fill that, and this is going to help do that. So for me, to, for that type of an abatement, that helps me, and it includes the retail. So what I would ask you to do is, is in these types of abatements, if you could get this information for us, and then in the future, include this information in the report. That's, that's all.
Of course, and actually, I'll reach out to Mr. Savan and ask for those current numbers. You can either hold on this or wait, and I'll distribute it there.
You know, I don't necessarily need to hold. I, I don't, I don't, you know, it isn't going to hinge on that.
Understood.
But it does give me comfort walking away. It gives me a good feeling inside that that was the right thing to do, because it's a struggle, in my mind. It was for me, on a residential property, that we're given a tax abatement to, so, or, you know, a residential complex, if you will.
Correct.
You know, it's not normally what we do. Usually, it is about jobs and creating jobs and, you know, manufacturing or something, you know, to put people to work. Here, it doesn't, to me, it's more about occupancy. So if you could, if you could give me that information, I'd appreciate it.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Prince? Ken, thank you again for the work that you and your staff do on this, Mr. Spear in particular. I suspect everybody agrees with me, the information that's not only in the letter, but the additional documents that you provide us, the spreadsheet that really provides us with some historical, you know, references is always very helpful, so thank you for the work that you do and the information that you've shared.
Of course.
I'd echo Mr. Compton's comment. I hadn't thought about it before, but I think his points were taken, so any follow-up information that you can provide us with regard to those residential components is well taken. You know, not to belabor the point, but, you know, Riverwalk Development, I struggle with that one just a tad, and clearly, there are some rational reasons why ground hasn't been broken yet on that, and I think both as originally proposed and even the new concept, you know, subject to review, would be a net benefit for the community. So it sounds like there is a chance that if construction schedules line up and they're able to break ground prior to May of 2022, they wouldn't have to re-initiate the process. The only re-initiation would be the result of that change in concept, or if they went past the ability to be able to break down prior to 2022. Is that correct?
Both of those points, that's correct.
Okay. You know, and again, it's a minor concern, and, but it seems like since 2017, that original concept is now so stale that I feel like when they do break ground, if it's before May of 2022, that we've really lost something in the process. So it is what it is at this point in time. It's beyond everybody's control, and I'm certainly going to vote in favor of it, but as this plays out, and I know that you and the administration and others have really worked closely with the developer to try to shepherd this through the process, and I appreciate the work that you've done, but as we approach that May 2021, or May 2022, I'm sorry, deadline, and as this plays out, if we reach a tipping point where there, it's legally appropriate to either recommend that they re-initiate the process or continue under the existing abatement, speaking from my standpoint only, I've come down on the side of re-initiating just because of the reasons that I've articulated, but my hope is that if things are going to come together, they'll either be able to meet the May deadline in 2022, or the new concept will resolve it in and of itself.
We've expressed that to them in our discussions.
I suspected as much.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else for Mr. Prince? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? And then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for a question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes 920. Resolution R. 2021-08, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Michawaka, Indiana, making a final determination and confirming the designation of areas within the City of Michawaka, Indiana, known as 1121 West 11th Street, as an economic revitalization area for the purposes of real property tax abatement. This is for, tax abatement for Well-Pet at 1011 West 11th Street.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed Resolution 2021-08. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Ken Prince, City Planner. I wanted to jump ahead of the applicant, just to express, on behalf of the administration, we think this is doing right by the community. I think we have expressed to Well-Pet for a long period of time, and they've worked in good faith to address the odor issues coming from the plant. They started with an encapsulation system, and forgive me if I'm getting the technical terms wrong, I'm sure they can correct me, but that didn't work out as planned, and so the cold plasma system they have proposed, we have, based on the numbers that they provided and the PowerPoint that was referenced earlier this evening, that could significantly decrease the amount of odors coming from the facility, and so we're wholeheartedly in favor. And just for a nutshell, for those watching online, the total investment plan for this facility is $42.6 million. This is only a 90-by-90 addition, although it's tall, well over 80 feet. It is appropriate, given the location of it, away from, it's, the closest single-family property is over 500 feet away from this. It's not adjacent to any particular portion of the plant that's closer to residential property. The personal property is, the equipment itself is over $27.9 million of the investment, and the real property, the building itself, has a value of $14.7 million. When you project out the taxes paid versus taxes abated, if approved, the real property taxes appropriated over the next five years amount to $2.227 million, and the owner would have $1.336 million abated and would pay $890,000. For the equipment, it amounts to $3.284 million over that period of time. The owner would have $1.97 million abated and would pay $1.313 million in taxes. In short, when you think of the abatement as an incentive to correct the issue, we have, we're talking about a $42.6 million investment, we're talking about addressing the odor issue, and we're talking about an investment that will generate over $2 million in taxes above and beyond the abated amount in that five-year period of time. In our opinion, we think this is very favorable to the City of Michawaka, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince? No, not a question, but again, thank you for the work that you and Mr. Spear did on putting this information together for us.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward.
Hi, Doug Mitchell, Director of Operations for Well-Pet. I just wanted to take a second to say we wouldn't be having an additional presentation tonight. We'd like to defer to our previous presentation. We're happy to answer any questions, and I'd just like to thank you for the time that you've spent over the last month considering this.
Fantastic, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Emmons?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we talked about getting together with the community for a meeting to kind of update them with what your plans are for eliminating the odor, the type of equipment that you're putting in there, and the amount of, how do I want to say it, displacement of the odor and creating these stacks and everything like that. I was wondering whether you would be willing to meet with people from basically surrounding, like Berkeley and Rose Park area, and that, they, the third Thursday of the month or something like that, in that area of time?
For April? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I can't give a definite yet, but I'm just trying to find out if you would be in that area, sometime in that area, either the third or fourth Thursday, if that would be.
Yeah, as long as it's early evening. I have commitments from the 20th to the 22nd this month, but I'll be available.
Okay. I will get back with you and firm up once I contact, like Berkeley and the Rose Park area-
Sure.
...and stuff like that, and that we can use their community center and stuff like that to where you can make a presentation.
Absolutely.
And I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmons. Other questions? Mr. Compton?
Just want to make a comment that, just want to say that I comment publicly that I support Well-Pet and this community and where they, that they've been here for a long time, starting as a family business, what they do now. I know it hasn't been always pleasant with, you know, just, it's, you know, a byproduct of your operation, but I also appreciate the efforts you've made in the past and the effort you're making now to, to improve that and what you've done in the community. I really appreciate you being here.
I appreciate the comments. We appreciate the feedback from the community. We make every effort to do the right things for the community and the neighborhoods that we work within, and we continue to strive to get better.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other questions or comments?
I would just second what Mr. Compton just said. We really do appreciate it. I think you guys are going above and beyond resolving the problem. It's been here for 30 years, and, not that you guys have been here 30 years, but you're dealing with it. We appreciate that.
No, we appreciate the cooperation of the city as well.
Thank you. Let me then echo the thank you parade that is coming, heading your way. First and foremost, for what Well-Pet has done as a recipient of prior tax abatements. I'm sure your ears perked up, Mr. Prince's reference to your current abatement, and you're to be congratulated for exceeding your, you're in our expectations with regard to the investment, employment numbers, and the payroll. So I believe that it has long been a good investment on the part of the community to partner with Well-Pet as you continue to expand and do the work that you do and employ the people that you employ in our community, so thank you for that. You may have also heard the prior dialogue Mr. Compton, in my opinion, raised a really valid point with regard to another tax abatement of a residential nature, and asked for us to receive some additional information with regard to occupancy of that building. And that's a little bit different than what the information that we normally receive, but it makes a lot of sense to me, given the particulars of that abatement. Similarly, your request that's in front of us this evening has that unique twist to it, if you will, the odor control component. And even though that's been a part of prior presentations and the prior partnership between the community and Well-Pet, now, I think we're all excited that there is a greater chance of success than any of us would have envisioned in, you know, not too long ago with regard to addressing this issue. I have to tell you, I even took a few minutes and looked at the website, and I'm going to bungle the name of the company that does the remediation equipment, but it was a really impressive website, and it wasn't that I doubted what you had shared with us before, but it lines up perfectly with everything that you have indicated to us. So this isn't just your representation, there is a tried and true remedy that's out there. To my earlier point, though, it would be my hope, and I'd appreciate, you know, your feedback on this, that as this process moves forward, and what I hope is going to occur is that you're going to receive approval tonight, that you would continue to update us with regard to what I assume is going to be, I guess I'll ask some question, I'll take a breath and ask a question. My assumption would be that, once you implement the new odor control machinery, that you're going to do some follow-up testing to try to confirm whether what you have purchased and what you have put in place is, in fact, hitting the mark in terms of what you anticipate. Is that correct?
So we will continue to do testing to ensure that we're getting the value that we paid for from our cold plasma company, although I'd like to say that the abatement, you know, while this is one unique twist of the abatement, is for economic revitalization in the area. We are adding jobs, and we are adding growth to the business. So it's one part and, you know, as well as the other, so as long as we're not pinning the entire abatement on one factor and not the entire package, I'm fine with that.
I think that's a very fair point, and I don't think we should ever look past a $42 million investment in total and focus on one of the smaller components, but I don't have a problem with telling you that, in my mind, it's a significant component, and the justification for approving this abatement, in my mind, goes beyond the dollar investment that you're going to be making in the odor control. Quite frankly, I would really struggle, if not unfortunately, probably come down on the side of not voting in favor of this abatement, if the odor control component wasn't- side of not voting in favor of this abatement if the odor control component wasn't in place, simply because of what I believe is the unintended consequence that has been visited upon the neighborhood as a result of that odor, and it has a definite negative impact currently on the quality of life there. This is a great investment, in my mind, and the problem isn't going to get any better if we don't partner with you on this investment to try to remediate the odor issue. But again, the, that benefit is, at least in my mind, one of the compelling justifications to this, and I view this as being, beyond the dollars again, part of the analysis of whether the totality of the benefits, as we're obligated under the law to find, justifies this abatement. So my hope would be that, both in the short term, as you implementate, implement, try to use the right word, the new equipment, but then on an ongoing basis, as I assume that you're going to continue to try to make sure that you're getting the bang for the buck, that you're going to invest in this equipment, that as you report to us on an annual basis, any information that you can share with regard to the efficacy of the odor control, that that would be part of the presentation that you provide to our staff that then also comes to us, even if that, strictly speaking, doesn't flow into one of the boxes on the form.
No, absolutely, and whether it's forty-two million or four hundred thousand, we're going to try to always do the right thing for the community, for our business, and for Mishawaka in general. So, I mean, the odor, odor control is a huge part of rebuilding relationships within the direct neighborhoods, and that's really one of our main goals, as well as expansion of the facility.
And I appreciate that, and again, I don't think that I and we can say too often that you are a valued, you know, corporate resident of Mishawaka, if you will, good community partner. You do good work in the community beyond the people you employ, the taxes that you pay. You do things to support educational institutions and other components of the community that add to the quality of life. But this investment and dealing with that odor control is really going to bring it full circle in, in terms of justifying our community's investment in your operation and your investment in the best interests of our community. So I thank you for the work that you've done, but if you can just make a note to continue to provide us, even before next year's reporting cycle, as the, as you have some good news to share with regard to the efficacy of the equipment, if you could pass that along to Mr. Prince or the clerk's office and get to that, get that information to us, I know I at least would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone who is participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Is there anyone physically present who then wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes nine two zero. Resolution R. 2021 dash zero nine, a resolution of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, making a final determination and confirming the designation of areas within the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, known as 1121 West 11th Street, as an economic revitalization, revitalization area for purposes of personal property tax abatement.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed resolution 2021 dash zero nine. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Ken Prince, City Planner. I just want to note that I'd like my previous comments referenced for this resolution as well. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince?
Thank you.
You again, Ken. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. And then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes nine two zero.
Thank you. Ordinance is on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2021 dash twelve, and ordinance amending chapter one thirty-seven of the municipal code of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of nineteen sixty-six of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is pen PUD amendment to allow an eight-foot-high anti-climb screening fence to surround the new Jude Creek Water Treatment Plant, lot number two of Jude Creek Business Park, vacant land.
Thank you. And I believe we've taken care of the committee report, have we not? Then may we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2021 dash twelve, report that they have examined said matter and that, in their opinion, it should be adopted, and this is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, then Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council on the committee report?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes nine two zero.
Thank you. This is second reading in public hearing on proposed ordinance 2021 dash twelve. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Mr. Prince, good to see you.
Good to see you again. Mr. President, Members of the Council, Ken Prince, City Planner. A number of years ago, when we brought this plan unit development forward for the water production facility, we identified a number of development standards as part of it. One of our oversights was the fencing that is needed for security for the well field operation. So per Mishawaka ordinance, you're allowed a seven-foot-high fence. We would like an eight-foot-high fence, and we also, for quality purposes, want to use a welded wire mesh. By the water tower, we're using a picket fence, like you would see around a cemetery. It kind of matches that. This is a different, more of a rural character, and we think to match the business park, the welded wire mesh will fit in. They're both about equal in terms of expense. They're both a high-quality and expensive fence, but the significant thing about the welded wire as opposed to chain link is when you cut it, it doesn't fall apart. It is essentially, think of your barbecue grill of how it's put together, and if you start cutting it, you would literally have to cut every piece to get out, and that's why it's such a durable fence. This is a type of fencing that would be used at a zoo to keep the lion in, in the cage, for example. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but that is the reason for the PUD amendment this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you again, Ken.
We can have lions? No, not intentionally, anyone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed